Call the meeting to order and looks like we have a quorum. I would like to introduce Jennifer Juarez. She is a new member of our committee and just want to welcome her and glad to have you.
Thank you so much.
With that, I guess we'll move into public comment. Ray, did we have any?
Yes, Erin Vanoy.
Okay.
Feel the love already. Good morning, Erin Vanoy, Director of Planning Development Services. Just wanted to give you all some general comments. Today, we have a lot of Platts on our agenda. Platts are a unique thing where by state law, if they meet our ordinances, whether that's by variance or by meeting the rule as applied, then we have to approve them by right. We can't deny them. You will see probably from the reports, we have actually changed some of our slides as we go through and our staff will be pointing some of those things out. We've changed our slides as we've worked with our engineering services, operations, street and bridge, stormwater to come more into an alignment of trying to work with our applicants as well as trying to protect the community around these applications where they are. And so you'll see some stuff maybe in your background information that we may have moved our decision a little bit, just a tad, but I just wanted to give you all that information upfront that we, it is a working thing that we continue to strive to work for our community as well as the applicants. Nobody within our organization wants to prohibit development or slow development down. We want to continue it and keep it moving. And sometimes that's where conflict can arise and we're trying to make sure that we're trying to be consistent and predictable so that developers, those that want to do things, know where the city might land on a subject. So just wanted to give you all that information ahead of time and thank you all for being here this morning.
Thank you, Erin. Ray, did we have any other public comment? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. The commission may request for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by staff with no opposition received to date. Since some items on the consent agenda may require a public hearing, the commission will accept a public comment on any items on the consent agenda in one public hearing. It looks like the only thing on the consent agenda this month is our minute meetings, our meeting minutes, sorry.
I'm motion to approve.
All right, got a motion to approve by Candy. And a second by Brittany. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so with that, we'll move into the regular agenda. First case is a right-of-way and alleyway abandonment. City Council has final authority for approval on abandonments. First right-of-way is R O W 2506, 1900 block of Coburland Street. A request to abandon an unimproved portion of the street right-of-way measuring 60 feet by 100 feet south of the intersection of Montague Avenue and Coburland Street.
Thank you, Austin Reeves, Senior Planner. This one comes to you out of the Fort Concho East Neighborhood. It is District Number Four, Patrick Healy's district. The zoning here is RS One, division plan is neighborhood. And as you said, we have a request for approval of the abandonment of a portion of street Meld out 21 notices on this, received seven in favor from the applicant's surrounding properties and none who were opposed. If you look at this map, you might think the abandonment is actually a lot. It's actually just a stubbed-out portion of what would be Montague Avenue. Onto our analysis, the area measures 60 feet by 100 feet and like I said, it's a stubbed-out portion of what would be Montague. It's important to note that no portion of this abandonment has ever been improved or used for access for any other lots. There is one sewer main within the area which will require an easement when they go to plat and incorporate that abandonment, but overall, we don't think that it would affect traffic patterns, the environment, or surrounding owners. So with that, we are recommending approval of the abandonment subject to three conditions, pretty standard three conditions. First one will be that payment shall be remitted for all of the abandoned right-of-way. Two is to record a replat within two years. As part of this replat, they do need to dedicate that sewer easement that I was talking about. And then number three being just for the quitclaim deed. Do you guys have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Austin? All right. Thank you, Austin. We have a public comment on that?
Russell Gully.
All right. Morning, Russell.
Good morning, Russell with S K G. Would ask for your approval of this abandonment as requested and happy to answer any questions. We're just kind of cleaning up an area that's really undeveloped so that the applicant can kind of get a replat and construct a home in that area.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Russell? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
Joe, did you still want to talk?
No.
Okay, no.
Okay, so I'll close public comment and open it up for discussion or a motion from the group.
I think a motion approved is presented.
A second.
A motion by Brittany and a second by Lyndon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So next item is conditional uses. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to City Council. First case is CU 2516, 2452 Douglas Drive. A request for approval of a conditional use to utilize an existing single-family residence as a gathering place and provide faith-based engagement opportunities for young people located at 2452 Douglas Drive.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry, Lead Planner.
Good morning.
And this is a conditional use. They are requesting to have a faith-based gather place for their ASU branch from the Catholic Diocese. It is zoned, single-family residential. It is District Five, Karen Hesse-Smith, in the ASU College Hills neighborhood. We did send out 13 notices. We received one in favor and two opposed. The one opposed you have in your packet is this one down here. She mentioned the traffic. And then the other opposed we received after your packet was published and he is here to speak also. I just wanted to show some pictures. So the bottom one, Douglas Street does, or Douglas Drive, does have a light which should help with some of the traffic. I did the top left corner because the house, I'm going to go back for a second. Oh, I can do that one. The green star, the house behind them is, they already use this house. It has a current conditional use for the same thing. They are trying to expand to this other house that they own. So I included that picture to show you, they do have parking and so one of the conditions we have is that they come forward with a development plan or a parking lot permit so they can show us some of the parking. So with that, staff is recommending approval. Again, that they provide us with a development plan or a parking lot permit and that they obtain all required permits. I believe they need a change of occupancy. Is there any questions?
Do you have any questions for Ray? All right, thank you, Ray. Go ahead and open up public comment.
And Richard Brown.
Do I get a handout? Everybody? Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So I'm fully aware of the three-minute limit, so I'll try to comply. My name is Richard Brown. I live at, go ahead.
I was just going to remind the chairman that as opposed, I think, and you're one of the neighbors, I think they would have up to the five-minute limit based on your discretion, of course.
Okay, if I can have five, I'll make a couple of comments about the parking lot after my prepared notes.
Sounds good.
Okay, so Richard Brown, I live at 2454 Douglas, I'm the next-door neighbor. I've got, what I've handed out is the planning staff report that was published last week. I just copied it. And I have inserted my comments in blue under each one of the six factors that are supposed to be considered when you make a change like this. And I'm just going to read through my comments. Number one, impacts minimized. The adverse effects have been documented. The Newman Center started using the residential property for meeting and gathering in 2022 and I documented the negative effect on property values with the Tom Green County Appraisal District in June 23. Even now, while applying for a zoning change, the property is unmown in areas, overgrown in others, and has a dilapidated fence that has needed repair since 2024. The picture of the backyard that was just shown is not current. Go drive by today, it's all overgrown and the fence is falling down. Safety and security. Students have access to the Newman Center with key code entry. What kind of access will they have to 2452 Douglas and how will that access be supervised? My observations of the meeting and gathering at 2452 over the past year suggests some informal access. Consistent with zoning ordinance. One, conflicts include degradation of property values, potential safety and security issues, and the creation of a new development pattern. A parking lot or new building at 2452 Douglas would constitute a new development pattern as there are no mixed-use facilities on Douglas or south into Bryant Park. Compatible with surrounding area. No, the institutional and student-related buildings mentioned in the staff report are all limited to Deena. Bryant Park is a single-family residential neighborhood from Douglas South. The proposed change breaks the decades-long historical boundary of having multi-use buildings all facing ASU and on Deena Drive. Effect on natural environment. Negative effects are probable. The planning staff report mentions future parking lots, parking lot permits and development plans. Loss of lawn and trees, addition of paved parking lot, more traffic, more noise, more exhaust fumes, more nighttime security lights. Five, community need. No significant need has been demonstrated. May, as in may represent quoted directly from the planning staff report, is not indicative of an existing need but of possibility or opportunity. No existing or significant need has been demonstrated that would justify exceptions to the single-family dwelling requirements. If there were a need, ASU has world-class resources. Student center, library, cafeteria, dorms, classrooms, parking lots, Center for Human Performance, academic buildings, and so forth. Stevens Chapel is open 365 days a year and their website says the chapel is open for events. Six is development patterns. No, there is no mix of institutional, residential, and student-related activities on Douglas Drive and into Bryant Park. The character of Bryant Park is single-family residential homes. The only area that includes a mix of institutional, residential, and student-related activities is Deena Drive. Please keep them on Deena Drive. Allowing the first mixed-use building south of Deena completely changes decades of history on Douglas and in Bryant Park, so it should be considered a new pattern of development and the zoning change rejected. So a couple of quick comments on the parking lot. Because as I researched this over the past few days and documented the deterioration of the backyard, it's obvious that they want that backyard for the parking lot. So I think that's what this is really all about. If their parking lot, they have a parking lot in front of the Newman Center and a parking lot behind the Newman Center, if that's occasionally full for two hours on one day of a week, I don't think that justifies making an exception to the single-family residence zoning law because there's plenty of parking lots to the north. The Biology Building, the Science Building has a huge parking lot. It's always empty on the weekends. There's a public school, an elementary school across Johnson. It's empty on the weekends. They can park over there. The school kids walk across the, walk across Johnson in the crosswalk all the time. So their parking lot may fill up occasionally, but I don't think that warrants what's been asked for here. Thank you. Any questions for me? I'm happy to answer questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Brown?
Today, do you have any, because of the Newman Center that's across the alleyway and you being so close in your residence, do you have any parking issues? Do you hear a lot of cars, a lot of kids? Do you have a lot of distractions because of the Newman behind you?
Well, I've walked over there and complained to them about their security lights because they send them out horizontally and they did make, you know, their credit, they made some adjustments, but it's very bright. The alley fills up sometimes. It's not illegal to, or it's, yeah, it's okay to park in the alley as long as somebody, there's still a pass-through. I see the kids in the front yard, I see the kids in the backyard. It's the degradation, you know, it's not that I'm bothered 24/7. It's that I don't really want to park, it's a new, this, we're talking about a new parking lot that's across from my backyard. And that will significantly change what's going on and I don't see any need for it. I mean, when I drove down this morning, there were four cars in the Newman Center parking lot. And if you drive down Deena, and I'd ask everybody on the way home today, drive down Deena. It's bad. I'd be, I'm embarrassed for ASU. And if I were ASU, I'd do some work with the folks on Deena to try and bring things up a little bit. But that's partly because of ASU, but that's where you've got this mixed-use, these mixed-use buildings. They're not on Douglas. And so I just, you know, once we open, once we make the exception, what else, you know, then Douglas becomes the new Deena over time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. We have any other public comment?
No, nobody else signed up.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and open it up for discussion with the group.
Well, I'm very familiar with this particular corner over years and years and years and I understand about Deena. If you've ever driven around Deena, it is, some of the houses are kept really nice and some are, have some real issues and there's always cars. To have a second street like that, especially as nice as Douglas is as far as older homes, Bryant Park is known for those kind of properties. It bothers me a little bit for, if this is just about a parking lot. My comment.
And so directing towards the staff, as far as the conditional use on this, they have to have onsite parking and how many spaces is required or are required?
So we would have to see a floor plan or I'd need a square footage of the house in order to get that, but it would fall under one space per 500.
Sorry, one space per 500 square feet?
It's pretty big, maybe a little more than that.
So, and can that be included on street parking? Like, or does that actually have to be onsite?
50%, 50% can be on street.
I'm just going to look up the square footage real quick. Okay, so, so the home not including the garage is 2262 square feet and you said one space per 500?
It would be four.
So four and a half spaces. And can you go back to the front edge? How many, or where's the driveway?
The driveway is on the side.
From the side, okay. Okay, and it's a single car or double?
It's a double car. It's a double garage.
So does that count as four spaces then, since you can fit four cars on the driveway? The garage states it's 650 square feet, so it would be larger than a single.
If you look at the overhead and you see that red outline, the red outline is the property line. So the challenge, A, is Johnson is an arterial, lots of traffic. The driveway portion is actually in the right-of-way, which most driveways are. And so really, the only way to legally count parking there would be inside the garage, which that would probably be two spaces. I think the intent would be to add parking in the alleyway, however, that may not be the best option. Because there could be some options in the front. Again, there could be on-street parking. There could be a shared parking agreement as Mr. Brown suggested. Because if they do have that adjacent property on Deena, there probably should be an analysis by the property owner of, all right, how often is it full? How often do you need adjacent parking to improve this? Or is it really just another meeting space that they're able to walk over to? Now, the change of occupancy through building permits will trigger a parking analysis and we should look at that and see what, how that impacts adjacent properties. Particularly as you say, Ms. Poole, you're looking at older homes into the neighborhood and obviously, this is right on Johnson, is adjacent to ASU and some other properties there. And so it is, it's borderline on that mixed-use. Ray, do you recall what the vision plan, the comprehensive plan is for along Johnson Street?
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood, okay. So it needs to, this would be probably the highest intensity that we would ever want to go through this process. If it's to be neighborhood, it should be something that mixes with the neighborhood.
So if the issue isn't necessarily the usage of the single-family home, it's more of the parking, you know, again, I think that if we have a parking analysis, maybe potentially look at a circle drive which would allow for easier egress, you know, when people are leaving. But, you know, again, with ASU being a fairly tight-knit community and as Mr. Brown said, you know, a lot of the time that parking lot across the way is not filled, you know, you would assume that a lot of the members attending would be most likely walking from the dorms or from other potential rentals fairly close to the vicinity. So, I mean, I think that, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to look at the parking situation as far as a joint parking agreement. What else can we do instead of taking the backyard into a parking lot? Can we do a circle drive? Will the permits department allow that? And will that give us sufficient parking to meet the city's guide on one space per 500 square feet?
And speaking of using the Newman parking and it be sometimes not full and having that back alleyway as part of their parking. And I go to College Hills Baptist Church and I'm there a lot, up and down Johnson. And I don't think in the last six months, I've seen any car utilizing the driveway of Douglas. And if they own both buildings or both properties, the kids could easily use that driveway for extra parking even today. I don't see that happening as many times as I'm up and down that street. That's one of the reasons I'm used to this. Crockett was a school for my kids, so I was up and down that street during those years. The thing that bothers me the most is taking the back alleyway and making the backyard a parking. I personally don't want to see that unless there's some way like we're hearing that they could do something else like a circle drive to eliminate starting something that would go down Douglas. And that's what I would not want to see. I would not want to see Douglas look like Deena. At this point, Deena had no choice. It outlines ASU. And I'm glad we have that for the students. In many cases, they're rental houses. Those are some of my comments. I don't see any cars utilizing what could be almost four spaces in that driveway.
This being a conditional use, you do have the ability to place conditions on your motion. And just taking from what you said, it sounds like there would be a, you would prefer a condition of no additional parking in the backyard of this property. So that could be a condition that you add to this case if that's something y'all consider.
So that would just force the applicant to move back to the city and look at a parking, another parking?
Correct.
Situation. All right. Can we bring up staff recommendations, please? I'll move forward with a motion to approve item two, but I would like to put a condition on the building that we look at alternative parking other than the backyard being turned into a parking lot.
So you're recommending no additional parking be added?
In the back. If it turns into a circle drive, I think that's A-OK, especially because I think that's extremely dangerous to be backing out onto.
But not on the backyard.
But not on the backyard. Is that clear enough?
Okay. All right, so we have a motion?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
None.
All right, so we have, motion passes with Candy voting in opposition, 5-1. Thanks, Erin, I needed help with that. I think I need to read then the next case, correct?
Yes. Yes, go ahead and read it then.
Okay, so moving on to subdivision Platts, the Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to City Council. First case is FP 25-14, the Elsie Gare, Section 2. Request for a final plat of 136 lots over 47.288 acres within the Baptist Memorial Retirement Community as to individually subdivide each home or structure. A request for approval of a variance for incremental half of paving width on North Main Street and a request for approval of a variance for right-of-way and paving widths on all internal local streets.
The applicant has requested to withdraw this case, so it has been removed.
Okay, do we need to take any action on that? So that case has been withdrawn by the applicant? We will move on to FP 2516, Southland Hills Edition, Section 25. A request to final plat, Southland Hills Edition, Section 25 being 4.314 acres under a planned development, PD 2203, zoning district located approximately east of Stone Canyon Trail and south of Forest Hill Drive.
If you can read the next one in.
Oh, and yeah, we'll read in the next case as well. FP 2517, Southland Hills, Section 26. A request to final plat, Southland Hills Edition, Section 26 being 5.214 acres under a planned development, PD 2203, zoning district located south of Forest Hills Drive and east of Walnut Hill Drive.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry, Lead Planner again. So this is two different Platts that, one is along this side and then the other one is over here. They are 4.314 acres and 5.214 acres. You've probably seen this before. We have had a final plat for both of these before in the past. They've been approved, however, they were not recorded. They have moved some of the lots from Section 25. There was a few, there was one more line over here and they have put it on Section So it is under a PD zoning. It is District One, Tommy Hebert, the Bonham Neighborhood. And so again, this is Section 25. The lots meet the PD requirement and this is Section 26. So with that, staff is recommending approval on Section 25. They need to install the water main and the sewer main, do a drainage study, and then the street construction for Walnut Drive and Valley Pine. And then staff is recommending approval on Section 26 with the same conditions of installing a water main, a sewer main, a drainage study, and then the required streets. That, is there any questions? Russell Gully.
Russell with S K G. As Ray indicated, we're just moving some of the lots from Section 5 over to Section 26. It just kind of helps some timing of some stuff in the phasing of the street construction. So we just kind of asked for your approval of 25 and 26 as presented and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Russell.
Thank you.
Any other? Any other public comment? All right, so I'll go and close public comment and open it up for discussion or a motion from the group.
Make a motion to approve, approve as presented by staff.
Got a motion by Brittany on, we need to do two separate?
Yeah, do two separates.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve section 25 as presented by staff and I'll make a second motion to approve section 26 as presented by staff.
I'll second both.
Okay. Have a motion and a second by Candy and Brittany for section 25 and section 26. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Both motions pass, six zero. All right, moving on to FP 25-18, Arden Heights, section one. A request to final plat, to final plat for 12 new residential lots as part of Arden Heights, section one. These lots span 9.141 acres and will be located along Navidad Street, a local road coming off of Bosque Drive, a new minor collector. Austin. Oh, sorry. We'll get there. All right, next case. In addition to number four, this is FP 25-19, Arden Heights, section two. A request to final plat for 13 new residential lots as part of Arden Heights, section two. These lots span 8.445 acres and will be located along Neches, Neches Street. New local road coming off of Bosque Drive, a new minor collector. Now you can go, Austin.
Thank you, Austin Reed, senior planner. This is a pair of plats for the Arden Heights subdivision. It's within a newly annexed area of town up there north of Arden Road and off of 2288. This first one, section one, is a final plat for 12 lots over about 9.1 acres. This is within district number six. It's technically within the Bluffs neighborhood. The zoning here is mostly RS1 and the vision plan holds it as neighborhood. So here's a look at the plat itself. You can see all of these lots are located off of that Navidad Street, that new local road which has a temporary turnaround at the end and it connects back to Bosque Drive, that new minor collector which goes back to 2288. Most of these lots are somewhere in the 100 by 200 foot range. Section two is a final plat for 13 lots over 8.4 acres. Again, the same district, neighborhood, zoning and vision plan. If you can look at this plat, it's configured mostly the same. Lots are generally the same size and it also connects back to that Bosque Drive and has a temporary turnaround as well. They dedicated the correct amounts of right-of-way, there's no variances attached to these, so we are recommending approval subject to seven conditions. First one being for the construction of that local road to 40 feet or 36 feet with a sidewalk. Second one is for the construction of Bosque Drive, that minor collector. Third one for water main and required service connections. Four is for the drainage study. Five is for a fire hydrant and fire department access statement on the plat. Six is a temporary turnaround required at 750 feet into Bosque Drive as required by a certain section within our LDSO. And then number seven is just a provision that temporary turnarounds have to reference a recorded document allowing public access or be dedicated as right-of-way. Do you guys have any questions?
So again, temporary turnaround, we're going with Cali-Chi base. We're not asking for a development agreement or hold back or anything like that.
I believe that should suffice. I mean, I don't know if anyone else has anything to say about that.
We're reading the city engineer's mind right now.
Sorry, Kevin.
Morning, Kevin Bates, city engineer. Temporary turnarounds are provided for public access. Public access is considered safe if the roads are built to standard. A Cali-Chi base is not to standard. It may be, it may be okay for fire safety, but it's really not good for public access. So I would recommend that the pavement be per standard.
On the temporary turnaround?
Yes, ma'am.
What if the developer is planning on, within six months, building a road that hits at the 750 feet? I just, again, we've gone over and over this on multiple other cases. Southland Hills was the same thing, just adding additional cost on a development that is going to be built out fairly quickly.
The ordinance accommodates that in a section called phased development, which allows for the construction of that temporary turnaround, which then is modified to be permanent turnaround at the time that the street is continued on through. So it's a mitigation of that cost.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Anybody have any more questions? All right, thank you.
Then Russell Gully.
I'll go ahead and open up for public comment, by the way.
Russell with SKG. So, you know, the turnaround thing, we, we understand the, the ordinance talks about the permanent potential for them, so we're kind of working through the nuances now of how we deal with those. And so with developers, we, we may pave the permanent middle part of it and then do something temporary on the wings with asphalt or financially guarantee it. We'll work through that with engineering. So we understand the, the need and how they want those done, so we'll, we'll work with engineering. The, the item six was kind of a, kind of threw me for a loop on that one, but we'll work through with that with the fire department to figure out. I think we may just figure out where a good curb cut lay-down section would be where we could kind of do a modified hammerhead there to kind of meet what a turnaround need would be for that on Bosque. So I think they're all reasonable and some things we can work through on that. So we'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions for Russell?
Another two for, we're trying to get two and done and I, thank you.
Sorry, I did have one more slide for section two. You want to go?
What Russell described is ultimately is very acceptable for city engineering.
Okay, thank you.
Section two, it's very similar, seven conditions. Again, first one for the construction of that local road, second one for the construction of that minor collector, three for the water main, required service connections, four for the drainage study, five for that same fire statement, six is a temporary turnaround on Neches this time, and then number seven is that same provision about the temporary turnarounds. Thanks.
Thank you. We have any other, anybody else down for public comment?
Rocky, did you want to talk? Nope. Nope, we are good.
Okay, we're going to close public comment and open it up for further discussion amongst the group or a motion.
I'll motion to approve FP 25-18 and then motion to approve FP 25-19.
Let's have a motion from Patrick for FP 25-18 and 25-19 to approve as presented and a second by Brittany. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Both subdivision plats pass, six oh. Next case is FP 25-20, Saddle Creek Park addition, section three. A request to final plat, Saddle Creek Park addition, section three being .84 acres creating seven lots for single-family homes located east of the corner of Travis Street and Lakeview Heroes Drive.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry, lead planner. So this one is out on Lake here, Lakeview Heroes Drive and Travis Street is up this way. The final plat is .84 acres. It is RS1 zoning and it is in District Two, Joseph and Lakeview neighborhood. The city limits is right here on this line. This is the final plat. It is creating seven lots. And I included this one because one of the conditions is they have to add this access easement. The Lakeview Hero Drive is an arterial and you cannot have a drive access off of it, so they cannot have driveways off the front. So this is showing an access easement for all of them to have the driveways in the So with that, staff is recommending approval. They do have three conditions to submit plans for water main, sewer main, and again to revise the plat to include that access easement. And then the note is that they cannot have the access off the arterial in the front of the houses. That, is there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Ray? I've got one question on the rear setback requirement. Where does the measurement for that start? Is it the edge of the access easement or is it?
It would be middle of the access easement back. It's treated similar to an alleyway.
And that's 20 feet.
I think it would be from the property line. Since it's not a dedicated alley, it's a access easement just for those lots, we believe it would be at the property line. Currently it's RS1. If their housing fits that, that's great. If they struggle, we would look at maybe RS3 or an RM1 that might help modify some of the setbacks. Unfortunately, it's too small for a planned development that could modify the setbacks. So, but in, in theory, the further forward you move those, because you've got a very large right-of-way and then you have 25 feet from the front property line, there's a lot of front yard that's probably not going to be used. And, you know, homeowners like backyards, so if you're able to move those structures forward through some mechanism that's not with the plat, but as another process, if that becomes needed by the developers, the, the city would be open to looking at finding solutions for that.
Okay.
Yeah, because it looks like lot 13, I mean, the buildable area, I mean, because they've got such a wide setback on the sides and the front, it's going to be.
It's a double frontage.
Yeah, a lot of challenge there. So we think there's, there may be some other mechanisms if they wanted to, if they're not able to fit their houses. Looks like their design right now might do that, but we're, we're happy to explore that with them and find some viable ways if they need that.
Just out of curiosity, on the double frontage to Travis, can the lot 13, can the driveway be off Travis instead of off the alley or easement?
Yes.
Okay, anybody have any more questions for staff? All right, we're going to open up public comment.
Erica Wildy.
Good morning, y'all. Erica Wildy with Wildy Engineering and Surveying. We just asked that you approve as presented. We, we were able to make this kind of work. We're going to use the front area for some, a little bit different idea for some detention. We're going to use some kind of rain gardens. So that's kind of what we're using the front area for. We're, we're going with a smaller yard scenario. That's kind of what the developer wants to use. So this is, this is kind of what they're wanting to do. The alley up there, as you see, is actually dedicated to those properties to the north, which was unfortunate, but was done. So that's why we've got the access easement in the rear there. I'm here for any questions, if you've got any.
Any questions for Erica? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close public comment and open it up for discussion with the group.
Can we put the staff recommendations back up, please? I'll make a motion to approve, approve as presented by staff.
Okay, so a motion by Brittany and a second by Candy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Six oh. All right, next case is FP 25-22, Nauman addition, section two, lot one. A request to final plat, creating one lot over 11.98 acres in the light manufacturing ML zoning district, as well as a variance request for paving and curb and gutter along East 28th Street and a variance request not to construct a new local road.
Thank you, Austin Reed, senior planner. Request for one lot over about 12 acres, district number four, Patrick Healy's district, Pauline neighborhood. The zoning here is mostly manufacturing. This one is light manufacturing and the vision plan is neighborhood for some reason. Here's a look at the plat itself. As you can see, it's just one big lot, 11.98 acres. It's cut out of a much bigger tract which is still an abstract. On the left-hand side there, you may see a little bit of right-of-way that's dedicated for a new local road that should come north off of East 28th Street. So a couple variance requests attached to this one. East 28th there is actually a minor arterial. Right now, as you can see from that picture, it's paved at about 18 feet wide, whereas 48 feet would be that required standard. Therefore, they'd be required to pave their incremental half, which comes out to about an additional 15 feet to bring it to 33 total. They have requested a full variance to stay at the existing width of 18 feet. Staff, however, would recommend a partial variance just to bring it to that minimum 26 feet with curb and gutter. The right-of-way there is 40 feet right now, whereas 68 feet would be that standard, so they'd be required to dedicate that additional 14 feet. The second variance is for that new road that I talked about. Right now, of course, it's currently unbuilt, but the standard would require them to bring it to 26 feet. They have, again, requested a full variance to not build that road. The right-of-way on it as well is dedicated at 26 feet, but we would prefer at least 31 feet as to allow a little bit of right-of-way on their side. We would also ask that the right-of-way is dedicated on the east side of their property rather than the west because we seem to think that the road would work better on that side. With that, we are recommending approval of the final plat subject to eight conditions and one note. Partial approval of that variance on East 28th Street and then approval of a variance to not construct that new road while still requiring a deferral through a developer's agreement. So the conditions are as follows. Number one is for the incremental half of that paving on East 28th Street. Number two is for the right-of-way on East 28th Street. Number three is for the construction of that new local road. Number four is for the right-of-way on that local road and to relocate it to the eastern property boundary. Five and six are for the water and sewer mains. Number seven is for the drainage study and then number eight is for that fire statement. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions for Austin? All right, thank you, Austin. We have any public comment?
So the applicant didn't send a representative?
No, they're from out of town.
Okay, so I'll close public comment and open it up for discussion for the planning commission.
I do have a few questions, again, going back to the whole curb and gutter. One, I mean, it's in what ML or MH zoning. Traditionally, in those areas that were far out, does a culver not, is that not sufficient for drainage? I mean, because again, I just, like, what type of curb are we talking about? Are we talking about standing curb? Are we talking about a rollover curb? Like, what is the city's requirement of this specific property owner? Because, again, I understand the width of the road is very narrow, especially if there's large transport trucks going down, but I also feel like it could be a safety issue once we get one section of the road a little wider and then have some sort of curb that, again, lack of streetlights or anything else out there on a safety aspect at night. So do we, do we know what we're requiring as far as the type of curbing? Is it a standing curb? Is it a roll curb?
The, I think the current ordinance would be a, a standing curb. I see our city engineers coming to probably give us a little more better description than what I can.
I think in this particular instance, a, what's called a ribbon curb would probably be more appropriate. It's not that the curb out here is a stand-up, would not be for drainage. Curbs provide some drainage, water conveyance, but primarily curbs keep the structure of the road together. No curves, everything ravel, ravel, it's like you see all the potholes on the edges. Potholes grow towards the middle and go down the street that way. So that's, that's why we really like curb and gutter.
Okay.
Does help with a little bit of drainage. And this particular road, although it's classified as a minor arterial, it's out in the middle of nowhere, it's going, it's going nowhere. So you might, you might consider that in your deliberations. So you might consider that in your deliberations.
My other question for staff is with the, it was notated about the vision plan is neighborhood. Is that something that we're going to be looking at as a future, like, to clean that up? I mean, because obviously it doesn't necessarily make sense that it's future thorough plans considered neighborhood.
We believe through our comprehensive plan update, that will be, that's a significant area that we're going to be looking at. And so we do think it will be cleaned up in that area, because most of that area is really projected to be more industrial, particularly with the rail port close, interstate on that side, and those types of large tracks that are undeveloped. That may be a much more industrial area.
Did you pull back up the conditions? Anybody have any more questions for staff on this, or want to see another slide again? Everybody understand what we're doing?
Can we go back to, somebody had mentioned that you guys would be potentially okay with a half of the portion, right? Could you just repeat that, so if we're trying to read something and we get it correct?
Yeah, it was on the East 28th Street. They requested a full variance, just to stay at that 18 feet. But we are recommending approval of a partial variance, just to bring it to 26, again, with that curb and gutter that we just discussed.
And that's the minimum road width required by fire? Or that's our-
Typically, typically.
Our current land development and subdivision ordinance is 26 feet minimum for any road. We do rely on our emergency services at times, you know, what is acceptable. In this case, it's challenging to predict the rate of growth out here. And so we certainly understand that. We also know that the proposed development will have initially large trucks coming and going while they're in development. Now, after that, that may not be the case. It may be very low traffic volume after that point. But we are at least trying to recommend our minimum within our land development subdivision ordinance.
So East 28th Street will be the main- road, I guess, to get into this property that they're-
It is the only road coming off of Armstrong in this area. There's no north-south roads. And so it's very large tract areas that are just maybe waiting for development as additional utilities come in, although there is a water main in the area along 28th Street. But you can see the large tracks there that- someday there could be growth, but we also think that's also a more industrial area. As you can see on this map, just barely, this is where the East Angelo Draw is. And so we all know the impacts of that over the last few months. And so that's one of the reasons to move the local road from being right in the bottom of the East Angelo Draw over to the other side. So just some technical things in there. We are in favor of deferring the construction of that local road, because while we want access, we want the properties to the north to have access at some point. We're not sure that the construction of the road right now makes a lot of sense. And so, again, this is some of those challenging things that we're trying to predict the future. And Sarah, are we being fair to all the properties around, as well as the applicant, trying to make sure that we're growing at the appropriate development requirements?
On the, on the deferral of the construction of that road, is that recorded with the plat? Or how do we memorialize that so that-
Yes, it is recorded with the plat.
Okay.
And then, yes.
In the future, I mean, there is some type of recourse that the city would have to make sure that that street gets built to the property owner?
Yes, and we would evaluate with the city engineer as they're working up the deferral. Is it based on time? Is it based on another trigger event of development? What is that timeframe, so that we can try to stay consistent? We would attach it to our internal land files as well, so that there's, you know, say another property to the east decides to break up. Okay, well, how does that impact this property?
That would be my biggest concern, I guess, is looking north of there and east of there, that at some point in the future, they become landlocked because the developer-
That is, that is a potential. There's, this is just an area that doesn't have a lot of roads, and they're large tracks. And if we don't think about those things, then we could get into a landlocked situation in 20 years. And that's the hard part of trying to make decisions today for the future. But that's why we try to project out, where is this area going?
So if we did a deferral on developing the new local road, the landowner to the north wants to develop his land, does that trigger anything with the deferral on this land? Like, how does that work?
Well, that would be kind of negotiated through the legal document of what responsibilities would be for who's constructing the road. We have in our land development subdivision ordinance that, say, if it got the full variance, the person to the north would be required to build the entire road.
Right.
And in the developer agreement, they may be able to put in a 50-50 responsibility to build it to the minimum local road standards, so that they have a local road to go back and forth. We do believe that, based on the proposed development, the right side or the east side of the property is where their main driveway is going to be all the way to the back of the property to access it. So establishing the right-of-way, they'll be probably putting down base and other materials there for that. So there's going to be some materials there to start out with. And then when that local road comes to be realization is an evaluation by our city engineering, and does this meet any of our standards, or what of our standards at that time to build it?
And the deferral would just be to the time of development, right, on this property? So anytime, at the point before they can start construction, not destruction.
That is certainly the preferable method, that it's triggered to some event in the future.
Anybody have any more questions? Don't remember if I closed public comment or not, but I'll go ahead and do that. And is there any further discussion with the group? Not entertaining a motion?
So the deferral to the development agree, I just want to make sure I've got my wording right. Is that correct? Like, if we deferred the local road construction, it would be deferred to a development agreement? Is that worded correctly?
Does that need to be included in the motion, or is that, can it be done administratively?
It is within the ordinance already.
Okay.
And not optional to request that, as opposed to do a financial guarantee.
It's kind of one of the options of a financial guarantee, is to do a deferral agreement.
What does the city prefer? Like, because I don't know, how long does a financial agreement sit? Like, if they didn't do anything for 15 years, what happens to that, those funds?
So normally on the deferral agreement, it's three years unless we specify some time certain or event certain. Financial guarantee, I'm not sure.
So if nothing happens in three years, it just goes away and they don't have to do it?
No, I'm saying, on this one, I think we would specify a different time period or event.
Again, we just don't want to get in-
Trigger it, but I don't-
Correct.
Y'all have to tell me what that is.
Correct. We would, we would look at a development event that would happen on one of the adjacent properties for them to have to construct the road at that time. We may put a time limit, because you start getting those things that if you're over a decade long, that's difficult to, for everyone.
Right.
So, but that is something we would discuss with the applicant as we work through the deferral agreement.
But so we don't have to classify?
No, I don't, I don't think you have to do it. But going along with what he was saying, we could do like the earlier of five years or a certain event that happens. So either way, it's limited by five years, or if that event happens earlier, then that's when it would happen.
Okay, but again, the staff would take care of that. We don't need to make that in the motion.
Thank you.
I'm probably going to slaughter this, so, just forewarning. Okay, so I will go forward with a motion. Of the approval of the, with the approval of the partial variance with curb and gutter on 28th Street, and the deferral of the development of the local road to whatever the city decides, whether it's a development agreement or a financial guarantee.
Second.
Okay, have a motion by Brittany and second by Candy. Any further discussion? So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes six oh. Okay. Next case is RP 2520, Lakeview Edition, Block 13 and 14. A request to replat blocks 13 and 14 of the Lakeview Edition, combining 18 lots into two total lots over 3.812 acres within a single-family residential RS1 zoning district, as well as a request for a partial variance on paving for Crockett Street. A request for a variance on paving for 48th Street, and a request for paving and no curb and gutter on 47th Street.
Austin. Thank you. Austin Reed, Senior Planner. This is a replat to turn 18 lots into two lots. It's over 3.8 acres, District Number 2, Joe Sales District, in the Lakeview neighborhood. The zoning for this area is entirely RS1, and the vision plan is neighborhood. Here's that replat. This may look familiar. It came to you as an abandonment one or two months ago. This replat seeks to incorporate that abandonment, and they're also dedicating that portion of the right-of-way, or the portion of their property that went well into the right-of-way to the south there. Here's that replat with buildings. You can see the left lot has some existing residential structures on it. The right one is currently vacant, but we presume that they'll build a residence on it. A few variance requests for this one. East 47th Street is actually a minor collector. Right now, it's paved at anywhere from 29 to 37 feet, whereas 36 feet is that standard. Therefore, their incremental half plus curb and gutter will be required where necessary. They have requested a variance to stay at the existing condition. The right-of-way there is 60 feet, and it does meet our standard. Crockett Street, which heads north off of East 47th Street, as you can see from the picture, it's paved at somewhere around 16 feet right now, whereas 26 feet is, again, that standard. This time, they've requested a partial variance to stay, or excuse me, to bring it to 20 feet with no curb and gutter. But the right-of-way, again, there is 60 feet, and it meets our standard. And then finally, East 48th Street is a local road. As you can see from that overhead shot, it's currently unbuilt, but 26 feet would be required. They have, again, requested a full variance to not construct it. The right-of-way is fine. So with that, we are recommending approval of the replat, subject to seven conditions. Approval of that variance for paving and curb and gutter on East 47th Street. Approval of that partial variance for 20 feet of paving with no curb and gutter on Crockett. And approval of a variance to not construct that new East 48th Street, while, again, requiring a deferral through a developer agreement. And the conditions are as follows. Number one is being for that fire statement. Number two is to install or confirm water service for each lot. Number three is for the incremental half of paving on East 47th Street. Number four is for the construction of East 48th. Five is for the widening of Crockett. Number six is for a potential water main extension and a loop through 48th Street, which can be taken care of through that developer's agreement that I talked about. And number seven is just to verify recordation of that prior abandonment. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Austin.
Thanks.
Have any public comment? All right.
Kevin Pate, City Engineer. This is a, one of those challenges that the ordinance has tried to address, where we have, you know, we think big developments. This is not. We've got two RS1 developments. We've seen a water main down Crockett and further down to 47th is a half million dollar project. Constructing that road on 48th Street is probably another $300,000. 48th, that section of 48th Street would be a very low-volume road. Asphalt oxidizes in the sun. If people don't drive on it, it just gets worse and worse. It would just be a maintenance burden to construct it at this time. I would recommend that condition number six be revised to read that water service should be supplied to both lots. We have existing water off of East 47th Street, a 12-inch main already. That's what the ordinance requires in Chapter 11, which is a provision of water to individual lots, as long as the health, as well as the Health and Safety Code. We have a bit of a, where this comes into play is we have a section of the LDSO which speaks to developing all adjacent infrastructure. That's great, if you're Tilsin Homes, maybe. But in this case, with two RS1 lots, I'd recommend that we not impose that.
So you would prefer, Kevin, the deferment or the financial guarantee of them dealing with the roads far beyond-
Yes, ma'am.
-our time? And that was a, which road? 48th and Crockett?
That's where the new water line at 47th, to bring water up there. He wants to strike it.
Any public comment?
Yes. Let's see, we have Rocky, do you want to talk?
Good morning. Morning. Rocky Simpkins, Senior Member, District 6. The only question I had or comment was, whenever y'all abandon something, y'all give it to them, vice versa. In this case, you're taking something from the buyer. And so when you do that, you're going to cause their carport to encroach in their 25-foot building setback. So it would look like at that time, if you're going to do that, then you would grant them a variance for that, because you're the one causing the obstruction instead of them. Thank you.
Thanks, Rocky. Can we go back to the plat view there?
So Rocky, you're talking about the building line that'd be on that Lot 17?
Correct. I believe that's what he's referencing, is there's a carport at the very front that's got covered parking. It's an open structure. This is in the open structure overlay area. We, staff will certainly look at that, and if they do need a variance, we would move that forward and be supportive of that variance. But I believe we looked at it under the open structure overlay, and being an open structure, it met the requirements. But I, we will double-check that to be sure. So he does bring up a good point.
So any other public comment?
Yes, Russell Billy.
Good morning, Russell, with SKG. Kind of here representing Gallaudet CDC. They're adjacent property owner to the north side of 48th Street. They own multiple lots there to the north, kind of with a plan, a vision plan, working towards developing those lots is part of their program. And so, as Mr. Pate indicated, you know, deferring the pavement till a later date, I think we would be good with that. I think maybe there could be some conversations between this developer and Gallaudet CDC on this, and we could come together, and maybe we build the street at the same time as part of Gallaudet's coming in and putting lots, or putting homes in on those lots, because at that point in time, then now the street use increases, and we're actually driving on it, and it's not just degrading out there under low traffic. So I think if there is an opportunity for some sort of deferral with a trigger of the development to the north somehow or another, I think that could be a benefit and a win for everybody. And so I just ask you to take that into consideration, and if there's a way we can work through that. And at some point, maybe we figure out what would be a good street width. When both sides develop, maybe we can come in and have a full 26-foot street width curb and gutter each side that really fits for the area. I know we're looking at the subdivision ordinance and street width, so we'll just kind of have that conversation through all of this stuff. So just kind of wanted to put a kind of, give you a little notification about what's coming, what Gallaudet's planning there to the north, so we can kind of take that into consideration for this one.
Great, thanks, Russell.
Thank you.
Erica, did you want to talk? Stephanie, did you want to talk? Nope, you're last. Stephanie, did you want to talk? Nope. Nope, you're last.
Erica, Gallaudet Engineering and Survey. I'm here representing the builders as well as the buyers. As you know, or you may not know, this property has sat vacant for many, many, many years. It is unique in the fact that it's 18 lots and it's going to be two residences. I ask that you please approve as presented. Definitely, of course, Russell and I will have conversations and if, if, you know, we need to do, as the city had said, a deferral, we, we can work, we can work through that and figure that out as those get developed. So.
Erica, just to confirm, you want the deferred development of 48th and?
Let's go ahead and, and yeah.
Crockett till a later date when the backlog develops?
Yeah, yeah. Any questions? Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Okay. No further comment or no further public comments. So I'll go ahead and close public comment and open it up for further discussion of the group or motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a comment is that this is an infill area. We certainly would support any of the applicants coming forward with infill requests, particularly when it comes to the water main for the northern lots that are not part of this plat but are adjacent to this plat, that I would encourage us as the city to look at that strongly to see how can we make that work when the development time is right? Because that's, there is, there does need to be a water loop. There does have to, to meet certain pressures and then hydrants and things. And so that we understand that's an additional cost. We have our, our engineering team that can help guide us of our, what, what does, what does it really take to service that area? Even if you add the 10 homes, is that enough water being pulled off that line to keep it fresh and reliable and, and things like that? And so that's always a consideration in these infill areas and particularly lots this large that are in, in infill area. But we do have the, our city council has been very forward-thinking in putting infill money aside for areas like this. And so I would encourage any of the property owners to look at those options to try to secure funding for those improvements that could come forward. Thank you.
Sorry, I said approve as presented. I would like to have Kevin Pate's number six, what he said.
So basically on that one is the extension. Kevin was just asking for the water to service the two existing lots.
Correct. Yeah, I think it's just a, a striking of number six and it looks like number two satisfies the water service lines to those two created lots that they're creating through this plat.
Okay, well, I will move to make a motion to remove item six from the staff's recommendations. I would also like to defer the development of 48th and Crockett to a later development date when development begins to occur on those northern lots. And then if a variance is needed for the existing carport that the applicant has, that the city staff looks at it and grants that.
Yeah, that last part, I, I don't think we can, I think that would be a ZVA.
It would be a ZVA thing, but staff is aware of that and we, we will move it forward if necessary.
So I'll go ahead and say from my measurements on here, it looks like they're fine under the open structure overlay zone. As long as they have 20 feet of right-of-way there, they have that five feet that they need for the carport.
Okay, so my original motion minus the carport comment.
Okay, I have a motion by Brittany and a second by Patrick. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes six zero. Okay. Next case is RP 2521, Ellis Edition, block 28, lots one, two, 15, and 16. A request to replat and absorb the abandoned alley and a portion of the street right-of-way along Vex, creating two lots out of the four located at 528 Vex.
Good morning, Ray Library, Lead Planner. This one is going to look familiar to you. You, you saw the abandonment last month. And now they are incorporating that abandonment. So it is a replat of .33 acres. It is RS1. The address is 528 Vex Street. It's in District Three, Harry Thomas, the Paulian Neighborhood. So if you remember, the abandonment was down here, this little portion, and then also the alleyway that was going right here. So they are incorporating it and making two lots. And I don't really have anything else to say on that one. So staff is recommending approval with a verification of the purchasement of the abandoned alley and street right-of-way. And I should have zoomed in a little bit more. There is a woodshed right on the property line right here. So, oh, I'm going the wrong way. So that condition, the second condition is we need a site plan showing that that woodshed was either relocated five foot away from the property line or that they have added the fire separation to it.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ray. We have public comment?
Erica Wildy.
All right.
Hello again. Let me read the notes. I would just ask that you recommend, or approve as recommended, or approve as presented. Sorry, I've already left the meeting. Do you all have any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Erica. We have any other public comment? All right, so I'll close public comment, open it up for discussion or motion.
Make a motion approve as presented?
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes six zero. And I think that's it. So next item on the agenda is the Planning Director's report.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of items. We do have a couple of committees that are starting to meet with developers. One that has to do with adding some zoning districts to our RS or our residential zoning districts. We currently have RS1, RS2, and RS3. RS1 is your single-family housing. RS2 is your two-family housing, which would still allow a single-family or, or like a duplex or something like that. RS3 is kind of a little unique where it has the townhomes and zero lot lines. And what we're seeing is that we need to have a little bit more flexibility for some of our developers, particularly in infill areas that may need smaller lots or some different kind of square footage requirement. Our, our 2000s ordinance that is very kind of cookie cutter, if you will, saying, all right, everything's got to look very uniform and matched, may not work for our infill development areas. And so we're working with developers of what is reasonable with always keeping an eye on what is protecting our, our traditional and historic neighborhoods and what is blending together well. The other area Mr. Gully alluded to is our land development and subdivision ordinance. We've got some areas in there that we want to do some minor cleanups, particularly of, all right, is the, the smallest road required being 20-foot or is it 26-foot? How can we get that to be consistent in areas with infill and development? What makes more sense? Because usually infill areas, the, the housing costs are so high or the utility costs are so high, there's a reason why those are blank lots. Well, how can we find a way with our land development subdivision ordinance to help with affordability in some way? There's not a whole lot of ways, but there might be some. So we're looking, looking at that. We're also going to be kicking off this fall our comprehensive plan update. We'll be going through a process to do a request for qualifications, to find a, a company to help work with us over the next 12 to 18 months to get that forward. We will be making lots of different presentations, some here at this meeting, some at just public forums. We do certainly want the public's feedback so we can evaluate areas like off of 28th Street. What, what makes sense and where are we going as a community? Where the interstates may come in and go through and how they impact our community? How are we growing to the Southwest and those future roads that are out there? What, what can we do to project those, those things? And all of it with the eye of fiscal stewardship. We believe fiscal stewardship is going to be critical over the next decade for our city because we know property taxes are, A, a challenge as well as limited. And every time we add things, that adds maintenance costs. And so we have to be very cognizant of our development of where, what is appropriate? And are we, are we getting wins and losses and, and are we balancing out? That's really kind of the, the goal. We always want different types of development. Some we're going to do really, really well on, others we may have some losses, but do they balance out? So we're very excited about that. We thank you guys for y'all's work and dedication to this commission. So we, we thank you guys for working. And we know some of the decisions can be very, very difficult at times. And our role as city staff is to bring you data so that you can help, you can make the best data-driven decision for the community. So we're going to keep focusing on our data and bringing you that stuff. And we will certainly give you our professional opinions and, and how we see it meeting ordinances. But we certainly appreciate y'all's opinions and what, what really happens in reality. Because we can have theory all day long, but we also have a community that works in reality and we've got to find ways to work in reality too. So with that, I just want to say thank you, guys. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah. Got a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry, one more thing. Next regular meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled to begin Monday, October 20th, 2025, at 9:00 AM in the East Mezzanine of City Hall, 72 West College Avenue, right here. So now with that, I'll take the motion to adjourn and a second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.